There it goes.
And everything falls down.
Where does it go?
Everything falls over.
It goes in there.
It goes in a little hole.
That's good. I do. What we made them for. All right, here we go. We are going to call this workshop of the Martin County School Board to order. If you would all please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. Republic. Nation.
Mrs. Falls, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Dieter Lysy.
Here.
Mrs. Roberts.
I'm here.
Mrs. Powers.
Here.
Mrs. Pritchett.
Here.
Mrs. Russell.
Here. Thank you. At this time, we will have open to the public. We do not have any comment cards at this time. Is there anyone here that would like to speak? Seeing none, that concludes public comment. We will now move on to our school board policies. Item number 3.01, policy number 1030, Superintendent of Schools. Is the board okay with accepting the Neola recommendations? Are there any questions?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, Mr. Dieter Lysy?
So, on 1030, hold on. Get there. There were some changes. I'm trying to see where it was. On, down on, on the second page, where it says A and B, and they're green, in green. I don't see anything about, like, violent abusive behavior, like grabbing, squeezing, pushing, hitting. In there, it lists a whole bunch of different things. No, wait a minute. Oh, I'm sorry, I'm in the wrong place. No, 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 I'm sorry. All right.
Okay. Okay, we, I do have a question about 1030.
Wait a minute, I put that note in there, but let me look and see what I did.
I'll, I'll do mine first.
Go ahead, Ms. Powers.
So, at the very beginning, on page one, it says.
I remember it now.
We go down one a little bit. I don't have my laptop. Sorry. I have.
Okay, so, I found mine. So, on paragraph, if you don't mind, paragraph B, where it talks about Superintendent shall investigate any allegation of misconduct by district employees which affects the health, I guess you can consider it safety, welfare of a student, including misconduct that involves engaging in solicit sexual or romantic lewd conduct with a student, and shall report the alleged misconduct to the Department of Education. And that's where, there was a recent situation where a teacher put his hands on, on students and, you know, verbally abused them, and to my opinion, that type of thing should be in that paragraph.
So, on page one, I found it. In the third paragraph, it starts Superintendent shall provide educational direction for instructional staff and supervision for the support staff. But you, don't you think that should say that the superintendent shall provide direction and supervision for the instructional and for the support staff? I mean, you're, which one?
You mean putting in supervision between direction and for the instructional.
Yeah, and I don't know that he's just providing educational direction.
So, it would be providing educational direction and supervision for the instructional staff and for the support staff? Is that what you're looking at?
I was just gonna say to provide direction for the, direction and supervision for the instructional and support staff.
Okay.
Yeah.
Well, both of those changes could be noted.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else have any questions?
Mike, I think your question is more, it's in statute.
Yeah, I understand, but it lists all these other ones, and that's why I thought, okay, if it's list, and it does list the statute. It does list the statute.
And those are the things that are in the statute.
Oh, okay, so, it just appears like it's not, sorry, I left my notes on my phone. Like it's not mentioned, so as if somebody could say, well, you don't have it in there. So, I don't know.
Well, I don't think that this precludes the things that you're talking about. It's just specifically called out, because it does say any misconduct.
Right.
So, I mean.
Fall under that category.
I think it would fall under, what you're saying would fall under it, but I guess this is what the statute says.
As long as it's understood, I'm okay.
Any other questions for this one? All right. Next one, item number 3.02, policy number 1120.11, 3120.11, 4120.11, preference for veterans in employment. Is the board okay with accepting the Neola recommendations, or are there any questions?
Have a question.
Ms. Roberts?
Okay, you can first.
At the end, it talks about the recruitment plan, so I'm just looking for some assurance that somebody's developing a recruitment plan that we will then be adopting, I guess, as a board, since it does say that the board will develop and implement. So, Mr. Raymond?
Yes. In reading that language, I can assure you that I will present a written plan to articulate the strategies we're already implementing, for your approval. Currently, there are strategies, strategies in place, but we do not have the written version to offer tonight, but I will prepare that for you, for the whole group.
Thank you.
So, is this a plan that we would need to approve, or wouldn't we want the superintendent? This is, this type of language is throughout as well. There are times when it's the superintendent, and it's ti, times when it's the board. I would be okay if the superintendent develops the plan, develop and implements the plan, and he approves.
Change it, change it from the board to superintendent? Okay, I'm okay with that. I just didn't want it to say something in our policy that the board was doing something that we were not doing. That's the only.
There's another one that's like that, too, and I have a note.
Yeah.
Mr. Dieter Lysy?
So, on this one, I'm curious to know, because it mentions, dah 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 dah, hang on. It mentions. Bear with me. Preference for veterans in employment, it mentions appointment or retention in positions of employment. Where does it, I saw recently a situation where a teacher's husband was, was relocated as part of a, what do you call it? Excuse me, I'm missing the word I'm looking for. He was a reservist, and the teacher was told, well, you know, you can leave, but if you come back, you're gonna start all over again. And I thought that really is not any way to treat a veteran's wife. And I, I didn't know if there's another policy that relates to that, or if that could be added to this policy, because we really should, you know, it, it would affect the reservist. He'd be out there without his wife somewhere in, you know, North America, and not, and she'd lose a job that was, you know, maybe had him for a long time.
Yep, I can absolutely speak to that. So, there's, um, other language that currently exists in our contract with the MCA members. We met earlier this week with Superintendent Maine and the MCA, and it will be Mr. Maine's suggestion to the board to change that language to include the spouse, not just the employee. So, in this case, Mr. Maine will make the recommendation that this particular teammate has extended the unpaid leave and does not lose her position here in the Martin County School District.
Thank you very much.
Welcome.
We'll be bringing that policy forward soon.
Will, will that be a policy, or will that be part of the contract?
Right.
There's, there's current, to start with the first question, there's existing language that exists in the contract, in the CBA. So, the, the pathway to get there would be to amend the language in the contract. This policy is more for retention in a different lens, such as imagine a school had to lose three teachers due to allocations. We could approach it the same way with veterans' preference. If candidates were equally qualified, and one was a veteran, you would employ the veterans' preference for retaining a teammate.
Yes.
Correct. So, everything Jeff said is 100% correct. Any accompanying policy that reflects military leave, we'll take a look at as well.
That's policy number 3430.07 for military leave, and 3430.08 for professional and sabbatical leave.
We'll take a look at everything comprehensively. Yep.
Head, Ms. Pritchett?
Since Michael brought it up, will this employee have the benefit of this right away? And my concern, not to be alarmist, but if the contract is not ratified before she has to leave, what's going to be done to provide for her?
Yeah, no, great question, and so this was discussed with MCA during labor relations. They're very much aware of the recommendation that is forthcoming. So, I don't see this as contingent upon ratification versus a memorandum of understanding, and just an amendment of an existing piece of the code.
Are you happy that the?
Absolutely.
Oh, a lot of bother. Thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you.
All right. Any further questions on this particular one? We will move on to item number 3.03, policy number 2252, digital classrooms. We will be rescinding this one. Is the board okay with accepting the Neola recommendations? Are there any questions? All right. We will move on to item number 3.04, policy number 2260.01, section 504 slash ADA prohibition against discrimination based on disability. Is the board okay with accepting the Neola recommendations with adding the following language? Page two of five, the ADA slash 504 coordinator. First paragraph, add Don Calderon's name and information. Page four of five, appealing to OCR slash Florida Commission on Human Relations slash EEOC, select 60 days. Are there any questions from the board?
I have one question.
Ms. Pritchett?
I have no objection to adding Don's name. I just look ahead. At some point, we will need to look at this to make sure, if he's not in that position, that the name be removed. And I'm wondering if the information, the phone number, address, and things should be added, but not the name. I'm not sure what is the best way to do it.
Well, honestly, these policies should be updated periodically.
Okay, so we need to make sure that we have a ticker that says, we've got a, a name and a number in here, and we need to look at it, like, in a year, or two years, or five years, whatever it is, because that can get stuck, if you will.
I understand.
Thank you.
Does it have to be a name, or can it be just a position?
Title, yeah.
Because every time, we have to go through a four-month process to amend a policy because we had a name change. It just seems a lot.
Be considered a technical correction, and we can move forward with that.
Without changing anything.
That is correct.
That would be under a resolution, correct?
It would be for termination, it would be for improvement, you know, if you were getting a raise, promotion.
Thank you, Mr. Dieter Lysy.
You're welcome.
But, yeah, the same thing would go for the student's side with Wilma's name being added as a contact. There's another policy in front of you tonight with Mark Coco being the facilities or contact. So, we've gone back and forth on it, but I think the vision of Mr. Maine is as we move towards the Microsoft migration with the district, and having a SharePoint, that we would, as a staff, be able to delineate whose name is in what policy and, and change it fairly quickly, so we're not in a situation like you just described.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Roberts, did you have anything?
Just right underneath Don Calderon's name, if that language can be fixed to not say, take out the this, of this individual, and just say name, title, and contact information will be published annually. And then at the very end, so, Mr. Calderon, and I guess Wilma, are you all the ones responsible for making sure it's being published on the district website?
Correct. I have created a ADA webpage on the Risk Management and Employee Benefits website, where we have a whole section dedicated to ADA. And for, on the Student Services side, we're making sure that that contact information is provided as well.
She's shaking her head, so I don't know what that means.
I said, on the ESC side.
All right, ESC side.
On the ESC side. That Wilma has that written on the ESC website, that she's also the ADA coordinator slash 504 coordinator for the board.
Well, it also says it'll be in the staff handbook as well.
And included on the district's recruitment statements and general information publications, so, Mr. Low?
Yeah, our department is aware and can facilitate whereby ever, whatever means necessary.
Mr. Dieter Lysy?
Thank you. So, the ADA, regarding the ADA coordinator, who is responsible for the professional development on ADA policies? Because those policies, I mean, the handbook is probably, you know, four inches thick, and hundreds and hundreds of pages. And as it changes, I think it's important that we do some professional development on, on those policies. And also, it mentions the building principal. What if the principal's out, or somewhere else? Is there an alternate for school sites?
So, there's always a designee, which would be the Assistant Principal of Student Services, or at the elementary level, the Assistant Principal. Just to give you some context moving forward, because this may come up as a pattern as we go through policies, I am looking to implement some changes at the district office. When we review policy, we will review these policies during executive team meetings with all parties involved that oversee those divisions or those departments. Once we review those policies together and formulate our recommendations to the board, it will then come to the board for your first review. But the key piece of information in reviewing these policies together as a team, leadership team, would be for the direct points of contact, such as the assistant superintendents, to make sure that their directors are making sure that these key pieces of information within the policy changes are being enacted as we move forward. So, to your point, Mrs. Roberts, on the website, making sure that we are up to date in compliance with any website provisions, that we are updated in compliance with any handbooks, or anything that these new policies state, we should be in compliance with. That is the only way I see forward, to make sure that as we go through many of these Neola updates, that we're not missing anything.
Sure, because I know that when we get to the food service one, there's something in there that talks about the inspections, and, and it being posted on each school site's website, the most recent and the, the semi-annual one, which are not, currently not there. They're on the district website, so I'm not sure which of your assistant people are in charge of food service, but whoever's in charge of food service needs to make a note and be sure that that translates over to the, the school site websites.
And this is something we discussed at our last leadership meeting on Monday. So, to that example, Dr. Miller oversees food nutrition. If there was a food nutrition policy that we were going to be reviewing during that meeting, Laura Hamadal would be invited to that meeting, so that we're all reviewing the policy together, and Laura would be able to then immediately go back to her department and make sure that those, those things were updated.
Thank you, that's good. Any further questions? Moving on, item number 3.05, policy number 2431.03, concussions and head injuries. The board okay with accepting the Neola recommendations? Are there any questions? Yes, Ms. Roberts?
So, I asked Ms. Falls this earlier today, the last thing that's being added about the employer or volunteer with current CPR or AED training will be present at each athletic activity during and outside of the school year. And I guess I'm perhaps looking at Mr. Calderon and wondering, how do we handle this with our leases? And what does that mean?
Right. Well, the, the policy in front of you deals specifically with the FHSAA requirement for, for, for school-sponsored and district-sponsored events. But to answer your question regarding, like, the use of facilities process, that's why we have the agreement in place through school dudes, we have the certificate of insurance that protects the district. Also, we have AEDs that are located without our campus. The high-traffic areas of the use of facilities are typically the auditorium, cafeteria, gymnasiums. We have cap, we have AEDs located at all of those locations. Additionally, on our website, we have a list of all the AEDs that are at each school site across the district. We have over 98. So, in terms of the AEDs, we feel confident that between our website and these facilities, we'll make sure that whoever is utilizing our, our campus will know where those AEDs are located.
I guess where I'm going with this is, when you read the sentence, and it says, "An employer or volunteer with CPR or AED training shall be present at each athletic activity during and outside the school year," that if, for example, at Hidden Oaks, where the basketball people rent the facility to have, it's clearly an athletic activity, and it's clearly during the school year. So, and I, I would, don't want to be between a rock and a hard place, where somebody's saying, but it was on your property, but it was, you know, yeah, but when I read this, it says somebody was going to be there, and us just saying, it's over there on the wall, and, you know, it's got self-explanatory information. I'm, I guess I'm looking for some assurance that it either is handled through the lease process, that it's, it's a checkbox on the lease, that they have to have somebody, that anybody using our facilities for an athletic activity, if you're renting the property, any athletic activity that's happening on our property, there's a box that's being checked that we know that there is a person present who is current with CPR and AED training. I mean, I think that's the.
I'm not interested in that language. I think that's very onerous, that we're putting taxpayer-funded facilities that, that level of, they have their insurance, they have, they've signed a waiver, whatever they need to do. That's just, that's too much. I'm sorry.
Then do you want to take, then how do you want to change that?
Maybe it's, it is school sanctioned events, or Martin County School Board approved events, or how FHSAA sanctioned, I don't know, but it would be, I just, I think that's, that's a lot, that's a lot.
Sure, I mean, and I can, I can see your point, but I mean, I just, I don't want to be in a position where we've got something in a policy that.
We're not following it.
That we're not doing the policy. So, how would you want to change that, then?
I guess I would, I would go ask Don how he feels about that.
Yeah, to what Mrs. Powers had stated, school-sponsored, district-sponsored, or FHSAA-sponsored athletic events would be what we would be responsible for.
Why don't we just say at school activity, athletic activity? That way, it's a school activity, it's not a tenant of the organization, it's a school activity.
Right, school-sponsored, district-sponsored.
You could say that, yeah.
It says school, the school sanctioned athletic team. It's lined down.
So, can we add FHSAA?
It says it in the second line.
I understand that, but it doesn't say it in the very last sentence. So, in the last sentence, between each athletic activity, can we say each FHSAA athletic activity? And does that clarify it enough, so that if it's?
Yes.
You know what I mean? I mean, I know that it says it up higher, but it's.
Okay with our language?
I mean, it says it multiple times about what, what is an athlete? What is, it's, defines it, a student.
Tries out for, or participates on any athletic team sponsored by the district.
But I'm fine clarifying it.
So, we just add FHSAA between each and athletic? Thanks.
Or, or at each school-sponsored athletic activity, or whatever you want to say it, but, because there may be activities that are not FHSAA sanctioned, that are happening at schools.
Right. And that's why we have that language with the school-sponsored, district-sponsored, like the Russell Holloway track meet, that's not FHSAA, but it is a district-sponsored event.
It could match the same language from above, where it says school sanctioned. Put the same.
Yeah, they use those interchangeably, because there's another one. I don't really care what it says, but I, I mean, how, if you want to say sanctioned, sponsored, there, the schools aren't sanctioned, are not a sanctioning authority, so it probably should be sponsored, because that would cover anything that's not sanctioned by FHSAA.
Everyone good with?
So, what are you saying, Marsha? Tell me it again. What's your language?
I, I guess I would leave that up to Don.
Yeah, I, I would prefer.
I mean, I would want him to do it. I don't, I'm just saying that it would be, however you want to say, it's school or district-sponsored event, or.
We use the terminology sponsored. I would recommend the verbiage being sponsored. Sanctioned has like a governing body feel to it. I'm not really comfortable with that. I'd rather use the term sponsored.
Okay. Any other questions? Thank you. Item number 3.06, policy number 2431.05, Athletic Injuries Prevention and Treatment Program. This is a new policy. Is the board okay with accepting the Neola recommendations? Are there any questions?
Okay.
All right. We're moving on to the next one. Item number 3.07, policy number 4162, Drug and Alcohol Testing of CDL Licenseholders and Other Employees Who Perform Safety Sensitive Functions. Is the board okay with accepting the Neola recommendations and the superintendent's recommendations of the following? Page two of seven, select option one. Page four of seven, select A through E. Page six of seven, educational materials related to certain federal regulations, board policies, and procedures. First paragraph, add Transportation Department. A, add Transportation Department. Select both options after sentence on adulterant. Are there any questions, changes, or comments from the board?
Good question.
Yes, Mr. Dieter Lysy?
So, in the beginning, where it says, fulfill such responsibility to each driver, as well as others who perform safety sensi, sensitive functions with board-owned and/or operated, board-owned vehicles, and equipment was removed from that, must be mentally and physically alert at all times while on duty. There's other equipment. There's other equipment that I don't see any, it's not in here. So I'm concerned, was that removed, that "and" equipment? Or that whole policy towards the safety of equipment? There's people that should be drug-tested for getting on the roof, and they should, you know, they should be, if they're working on heavy equipment, you know, should, I would assume this happens after an accident. It doesn't generally happen, you know, twice a year or something. It might, I don't know. But the "and" equipment was removed from there, and I don't think it's right that it should be removed there. If it's in another policy, I'm okay with it, but I couldn't find it in another policy.
Well, it does, this is for people that hold a CDL or perform safety-sensitive functions. So I guess equipment could be a tractor, or a lawnmower, or, so I tend to agree with you that probably equipment, or however we're doing that, should be back in there.
With keeping the words "and" equipment?
I have another, I have a couple of things. Can you go down, or up, whatever? It's on page one, hold on. No, I'm like... Okay, so in on page, so it would be on the second page, below, so it, there's F, and then there's a paragraph, then there's the next paragraph that starts with, "The board directs the superintendent to establish a drug and alcohol testing program shall be established." So I think we either should say, "The board," or, "The superintendent shall establish a drug and alcohol testing program," and take out "shall be established" there. Are you guys okay with that? Or, instead of directing the, directing the... Okay. And then I had one other thing on page six. I don't know if it was the same. On A, it says, "The contact information for blank," who is the individual? I don't know who that individual is.
The updated spreadsheet says Transportation Department again, but I think it really needs to be a title of a person, because something, I mean, I think you need a different name.
Whoever that person is, yeah.
There's actually two lines on, one in A and one just above it.
Well, the one above it, yeah, same thing. I mean, those should be individuals, so whoever it is in the...
Oh.
A title of a person.
Mr. DiTulisi?
Yeah. Actually, I was just re-reviewing it, and A, on, A and B, controlled substance, controlled substance, and illegal drug, that's a definition, definitions are, but illegal drug, and I think on the ballot this year, recreational marijuana is going to be on the ballot. So if it ever gets approved, marijuana is still a federally illegal drug, but it's not illegal in a lot of states and a lot of municipalities. So how do we address that? Can we change that to say federally illegal drug? Because that's always stiffer rules than on the local level.
Well, I think we, if it's passed, if the recreational marijuana is passed, or for that matter, medical marijuana, you can still require that your employees not use marijuana or test positive for marijuana if they're in certain positions, because it does impair judgment and ability. So, I mean, I, we probably should look into that, because I think that, especially for CDL, if you have your CDL, and now, I don't even think, I think there is a law, a rule now, that you can't get your concealed carry while you can open carry, if you have a medical marijuana card. So I think we should be addressing that.
So page one talks about controlled substances, and says it does not include illegally obtained prescription drug used for its intended purpose in prescribed quantity unless it would impair ability to perform the functions.
Well, we know that marijuana impairs your ability to function, as does alcohol, so, and alcohol is legal, so...
Any other comments?
And when you bring that up, Marcia, when you talk about, if you look at the difference on page one between B and C?
I know, I saw that.
So B is talking about impairment, legal use, but impairment that would prevent you from performing function safely. But C, which is talking about alcohol, talks about prescribed manner or prescribed quantity. And I think it probably needs the language about safely performing. So if Mr. Calderon or somebody can look at that, because I'm not sure what the prescribed quantity of alcohol is.
I think this one needs to come back. I think it needs to be reviewed by our attorney, specifically to address the medical marijuana, the potential of recreational marijuana becoming legal in Florida, and the alcohol piece, because, you're right, I don't, who prescribes alcohol for anything? Not a prescribed purpose for alcohol.
Yeah, so we're taking 4162 and having it come back?
Everyone okay with that? Okay, moving on to item number 3.08, policy number 5516, Student Hazing. Is the board okay with accepting the Niola recommendations? Are there any questions?
Good.
Good. Item number 3.09, policy number 5540, The Schools and Investigations Involving Students. Is the board okay with accepting the Niola recommendations and the superintendent's recommendations to include? Page one of two, select first paragraph. Page two of two, investigations of violations of law by law enforcement agencies. Select option including U.S. Immigration and Customs Enforcement, ICE. Are there any questions, changes, or comments from the board? Yes, Ms. Roberts?
So in the second paragraph, I'm assuming that we would also want that checked to include ICE, correct?
Questions? Okay, moving on to item number 3.10, policy number 5610.01, Emergency Removal of Students. This is a new policy. Is the board okay with accepting the Niola recommendations?
I have no problem.
Thank you.
Actually, it says it was, oh, it was Niola 2018, it wasn't in our policies. I had no problem with it.
Item number 3.11.
I have one thing. So if somebody can look at the, there is a thing in here about reinstatement of the student, and the teacher cannot refuse to reinstate the student. So if somebody, I guess that would be maybe the, the training going to the, from the principal supervisor to the principal, and then from the principal down to the teacher, so the teachers understand that they can't refuse to reinstate, but they can't ask for the reasons, just so somebody knows that, so we don't end up with somebody saying, "Well, you just have to do it, there's nothing you can, the board makes you do it," and so it isn't a...
Well, I think that's in statute, isn't it?
I think it is.
About the right of removal, but then there is a due process for the student, obviously.
Sure, but I mean, I just think that whole piece needs to be translated so it doesn't become a wild and crazy ride.
Are there comments or questions about this one? Item number 3.11, policy number 6107, Authorization to Accept and Distribute Electronic Records and Use Electronic Signatures and to Make Electronic Transfers. Is the board okay with accepting the Niola recommendations? Questions?
I have no problem with it.
All right, we'll move on to the next one. Item number 3.12, policy number 6110, Grant Funds. Is the board okay with accepting the Niola recommendations? Questions, comments?
I'm okay with it.
Thank you. Item number 3.13, policy number 6530, Reemployment Assistance. Is the board okay with accepting the Niola recommendations? Item number 3.14, policy number 7250, Commemoration of School Facilities. Is the board okay with accepting the Niola recommendations? Are there any questions?
I had one question. So in the first paragraph, it's talking about commemorating a school or a facility, and let's call a facility a smarter, smaller part of the school, so maybe it's...
Or board.
Yeah, like say a scoreboard, or a...
We had that.
Whatever it is, right. But then the A, B, and C procedures are only talking about naming schools, it's not talking about naming things other than schools. So I think if we're going to use this process, we need to be, have some consistency as to...
So we had this discussion at our leadership meeting, and we agree with you, what we, what I have staff doing is doing some research on districts that have policies exclusive to naming rights and/or branding of, so for instance, a school marquee, or on a sports facility, signage or branding, because this would just be in the, we need to bring a separate policy forward, I guess, is what I'm saying, for that, for the board to review, that would be specific to those types of situations. That would not, that this, it would be a separate policy in addition to this one.
Okay.
And I would like the board to consider, when we're naming something like a school, because the process that you have to go through to change it, so if someone is still alive, and we name a school after them, and then they do something really terrible, I think it's better to have, that they have to be deceased, honestly, because if not, then we have to wait 18 months, and we have this school named after someone or something, or facility, and...
And I agree. I think B should not say living or deceased, it should just say deceased, because I think that's come back to bite several people repeatedly. And then you get caught up in the moment, you know, "Oh, this is such a wonderful person," and this, you know, you get all that going on. You okay with that, Mike?
I'm perfect with it, yeah. I have no problem with it at all.
Delete the living people.
Delete the living people.
All right, well, we will move on to the next one. Item number 3.15, policy 7310, Disposition of Surplus Properties. Is the board okay with accepting the Niola recommendations? Are there any questions?
Yes, I had a question about this. So it talks about the disposition, it talks about federal property, it talks about disposal, it could be selling to the highest bidder, donation to appropriate parties, or proper waste removal. Then you drop down to D, and D talks about if you're going to, you have to make it available to a charter school on the same basis as is made available to other district schools. So, and I'm not sure the disposition, paragraph C, tells you how to make it available to other district schools. Know what I mean? So I mean, I think if you had, and I'm not thinking so much about a textbook or something else, but let's say you had something, you know, some piece of equipment or something, and now you want to make it available to other schools, it doesn't address how I'm making it available to other schools. So I think some of this language is kind of mirroring the, if you have a school, and if a district owns a school building and we're no longer going to use it, that you make it available to a charter school, so if a charter school wants to pick it up, they can pick it up, but, so I think that's where it's kind of coming from, that, you know, if it can continue to be used for the education of children, it's a good thing, and it should be able to be continued to be used, whether it's by a district, traditional district school, whether it's by a charter school, but I'm not sure that's covered under disposition. So I, I think you need some more clarity in that piece.
Well, and I think that we also need some clarity on, well, what happens if we have district-owned facility that is turned over to a charter, but then we need it? And that did happen in St. Lucie County, when their offices flooded and they had to remove the charter because they needed their, which puts everybody into, in a difficult position. So I think we have to have some sort of...
So this is more the stuff piece? I mean, and I don't know how...
I know, but there's got to be some sort of policy, or procedure, I should say.
Yeah, I don't know how St. Lucie handled it, because in the statute, once you give it to them, the only requirement is they can't sell it or get rid of it. But, I mean, if I'm a charter school and you gave me a school, and then you came back tomorrow and you said, "Oh, by the way, my building flooded and I need it," I'm not sure how they even...
I think they just told them to...
Told them, "Please leave, we need your building."
I mean, I just think we need to have some sort of, you know, like your notification piece, I know, how do, how do we notify schools? Like if you have a copy machine, let's say, and you're like, "Oh, well," you put it out there to every school and charter schools, and it's first come, first served? Like, how does that work? If we're, our, there has to be some sort of process that you're giving everyone equal access to the same thing, it's...
Sure, and I don't think that's what this, I don't think this policy is covering that, because I think when you're talking about disposition in C, it's pretty much talking about, it's an auction, a junkyard, of whatever else it is, but it's not, it's not taking into account, "I've got a copier, I've got a," you know, I mean, and I think that even though we sit there, those ET people say that it's obsolete, you know, sometimes they're still working, and you would find an elementary school or somebody who would still want it, and say, you know, "Hey, if you're going to get rid of it, I'll take it," you know.
Right, put it in the volunteer office, or whatever.
But how does that even happen? Because in this policy, it doesn't say it. So I don't know whether you want to dump this policy back and try to address that piece, or whether you think you can fix it before it gets to...
We just add something about procedures? I don't know, because, but I think it's, there's, there would be too much in it, the board would need to know, kind of, before we approve the policy. What'd that look like, don't you?
Yeah, I'm processing. I mean, this, the policy that we have currently is from 2012, so it's extremely old, we need to get moving with the updated policy. I'd like to really have staff bring back the proper procedure for review by the boards on what we would do to comply with this policy procedurally, and then...
And I'm all right with adding a sentence in disposition that says, "The superintendent shall develop a procedure for property marked as surplus disposal, et cetera, to be available for district and charter schools." I'm okay with something that broad, that it puts it back to you, and we don't have to know all the little individual steps, we just know that it's going to happen. It's not just a, "You can sell it to the highest bidder, donate it to an appropriate party, or do proper waste disposal," that there is a mechanism by which that can happen. Is that okay with you all?
I'm fine with that.
So if you just add a sentence that has the, in C, "The superintendent shall develop procedure," you know, blah, 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 to take care of that. Okay, thanks.
Any other comments, questions? We'll move on to the next one. Item number 3.16, policy number 7320, Acquisition, Removal, Disposal, Sale, or Exchange of Major Tangible Property. Is the board okay with accepting the Niola recommendations?
Question?
Yes.
There's nine paragraphs removed from this. Are they relocated somewhere else? Are they, like, they were necessary at one time, 2012, 28, and 2020, and this is 2020. What happened to those paragraphs?
This was actually part of the deregulation bill as one of the requirements that was no longer, no longer required for us to move forward with, to make it easier for school districts to manage these things. So Niola has updated to remove all of this language per the deregulation bill.
I wanted to know, in the removal of property, I'm asking the superintendent, when it says, "Property should not be taken from any school building or premise for private use. Property may be lent to employees outside agencies or organization only with the written prior approval of the principal or department head." So are you okay with the principal deciding to lend?
We, we, Ms. Roberts, you were... We, we, Ms. Roberts, you probably will remember, we had this issue in our maintenance department...
Yes.
Where employees were borrowing, were allowed to borrow, like, equipment, like...
Big stuff.
High lifts. And we kind of did away with that, because, I mean, it is an additional liability that we probably don't want, so...
Well, and I, and I don't, I think I want to kind of worry about a, a department head who, I need these people, you know, like, here, I'm in charge of this department, and I need these people, and this guy really needs to use my high lift on Thursday, so...
Yeah. I, I'm in agreement that we should remove A. I'm comfortable with B, because that would be an internal exchange, an agreement between department and/or schools, but the personal, the property...
Well, I'm okay with saying in A, that it has to have the prior written approval of the superintendent, so that if you wanted to lend something to an outside agency organization or something, that, you know, there, it isn't happening out in a field somewhere, you know?
Are we gonna lend, are you gonna want to leave the lend to employees?
That's the part I'm most concerned...
Well, maybe it should just be outside agencies or organizations. But, but, I mean, even, even employees. I mean, I could under, I could see a point where there may be a situation where an employ, where the superintendent says, okay, I'm gonna allow Mark Seacrest to borrow this to do X, Y, Z. Maybe it's not necessarily for private use, because it can't be for private use.
Washes windows? Like, honestly, like, what are you gonna, what's...
I don't know.
I don't think that's a wise precedent to set.
So, just take out the, can be lent to anybody?
I don't think we should lend it to anybody, because, you know, Mark may be the greatest forklift operator, but his four-year-old grandson might climb up on there and not know that it's, you know, and could fall off, and...
So, we should just say, then, property may not...
So, we have certain situations, so, like, the heavy machinery and tools, such as that. I think if we do this, it needs to be on a case-by-case basis with the superintendent's approval, so I can review it and determine which equipment. So, for instance, we've had instances in the past where there's maybe been a funeral of an employee, and they needed additional tables or chairs for that function, and because it was our employee, we did allow tables and chairs to be used. So, I think in those cases, absolutely, we want to be able to help the employee out with those things, so, a case-by-case basis with approval from the superintendent, I think, would be best.
Okay.
The changing principal or department head to superintendent.
Okay. Everyone's good with that? All right. We will move on to the next one, then. Item number 3.17, Policy Number 7430.01, Environmental Health Program. Is the Board okay with accepting the Neola recommendations?
So, I have one comment about, in, on page one. It says, inspection, inspections of all buildings, so this is in 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, the fifth paragraph down, and it says, "Shall be conducted at least once during each fiscal year by the Board." I don't know that I should be...
It's happening on Tuesday. Did you get that memo?
No, I'm not really comfortable doing a fire safety inspection once a year.
Mrs. Powers, that, that's what Mark Coco, our safety manager, has been doing for many years.
He needs to put his title in there.
By the, by the safety...
By the district's safety manager.
By, by the district's staff.
Yes.
Or by the district's safety manager, or whatever his title is. Yeah. I mean, unless you guys want to take that on.
It may be in there for some purpose of, you know, being board-directed, because then they have, you know, the elected officials that, you know, are on the board, are responsible to make sure it gets done. I'm, I'm just thinking that's why they had that policy, that in the policy. I don't think, I, I hope not. I don't think they'd want either one of us up on a roof, or, you know, doing fire inspections, because we don't know anything about them.
Well, and I don't know that we want to be directing staff. I think that they're directed, in the policy, to do it once a year. So, I mean, that's what the requirement is, and they should be doing that once a year. This policy directs them. I just think we should take "by the Board" out of there.
Uh huh. Agree.
And put in "by the safety manager."
Okay. Is everyone okay with that change?
And then, I had one other comment on page, the second page. It says, on the first par, under the direction of the final official, I think, I don't know if that should say, that word "final" should be in there? I don't know who, what the final official means. Appointed by the Board.
It's the last official.
The last one.
Final one.
Which, who's gonna, who wants to be the last one? I don't know what that means.
There does appear to be statute, statute language that does reference the Board, so, why don't we, and I, they just sent me the statute here, under Fire Inspection, Statute 69A 58.004, does make mention that there would be annual inspection pursuant to, let us review this. If it's statutorily driven, we want to be able to maybe change language to say, "Board or designee."
Do you want this one to come back, then?
Yes. I do think that would be appropriate.
Item number 3.18, Policy Number 8340, Letters of Reference and Disclosure of Information Regarding Former or Current Employees. Is the Board okay with accepting the Neola recommendations? Are there any questions, comments? Yep. We're gonna move on to the next one. Item number 3.19, Policy Number 8452, Automated External Defibrillators, AED. Is the Board okay with accepting the Neola recommendations?
There's a, there's a green spot that's added in here, about all employees or volunteers who are reasonably expected to use an AED shall be notified annually of the location of H-AED on a school grounds, which shall be available in a clearly marked and publicized location for each athletic activity. So, I guess I'm asking Mr. Lowe, you're gonna assure me that somebody's going to be doing the notification somehow?
Well, and it could be for all school-sponsored athletic activities.
And I don't think it's necessarily, I mean, so, do you only use an AED in the result of an athletic activity? Or, like, if Mike fell over, would we use an AED on him? So, it doesn't necessarily need to be an athletic activity, right? So, I mean, I know that it's talking about, if you're at, if FHSAA, you have to have them, but, I mean, I kind of feel like all of our employees and volunteers should know where it is, so that if Mike fell down, Dawn would be able to run and get it, and revive him, right?
Just don't use it. Yes, my heart stopped. Okay? It's a pain.
So, I kind of feel like that green language needs to be cleaned. I don't think it's just athletic activities. Is that...
You could go back and use the same terminology we used at the previous policy we were discussing, with school-sponsored or district-sponsored.
Events, just, it doesn't even have to be athletic, it could just be events. School-sponsored events.
I'm, I'm not sure as to why Neola put in the language about the athletic activity. What I can tell you is that last year, our safety manager, Mark Coco, worked with the superintendent to purchase additional AEDs for our athletics, that they are, they're kind of portable AEDs, so they travel with them out to the fields, whether or not, like, in a, in a close location, like, within a gym, so...
I mean, I kind of feel like all employees and volunteers, like anybody, should know where the AED is, right? I mean, we don't...
Correct. And, and we do trainings, we, Mark puts that out on a monthly basis. We, we host between 15 to 20 AED CPR and first aid trainings each year for our staff.
If you can clean that up.
One we are gonna bring back, or are they just...
No, you can just clean it.
Any other questions? Next one. Item number 3.20, Policy Number 8600.04, Bus Operator Qualification, Certification, Discipline, and Termination. Is the Board okay with accepting the Neola recommendations and the superintendent's recommendations to include? Page 2 of 5, Select Options A through R. Option M should read as follows: More than three moving violations, including adjudication withheld. Option P should read as follows: More than six points on license. Page 3 of 5, Select Options Subject to Discipline Up To and Including Termination. Select Options A through H. Page 4 of 5, Select Options I through R. Option M should read as follows: More than three moving violations, including adjudication withheld. Option P should read as follows: More than six points on license. Are there any questions, changes, or comments from the Board?
So, is this consistent with the contract? That would be a truly question.
Ask me.
Yeah. We'll, I'll have to review that. Mrs. Roberts, absolutely. I, we, we went through this and selected purely based on making sure that we did not have any drivers that had violations that were encompassing of these items, but we'll check the...
Because otherwise, that trumps this.
Correct.
So...
We'll make sure that there's an alignment, and if, if not, we'll, we'll need to bring that forward during a contract for next school year.
Okay.
And I'm just curious about the medical marijuana and all of that, if this, it's addressed efficient, appropriately, and the CDL one that we did before, or if it needs to be addressed again in this?
Probably both. So, we will get with Mr. Harmon and bring those back forward.
Perfect. Thank you. Any other questions on this one? Item number 3.21, Policy Number 8625, Ban on Texting While Driving. Is the Board okay with accepting the Neola recommendations? Any questions, comments?
How are we gonna place that? Personal vehicles while employees are driving to or from any location for district business? Personal vehicles while employees are driving to or from any location for district business? So, when Dr. Miller...
Something, say something. You wouldn't believe how many people will report if they see somebody, and they're, oh, they're texting and driving, and they get caught, say, they're pulled over, and they're on duty, and they, they're pulled over for something, and I think you can pull, get pulled over now for a primary offense of texting. But, if they get a ticket while they're texting and driving, and they're on duty...
Okay.
I mean, I see a bus driver going down the road texting while they're driving the school bus, whether there's kids on it or not, and somebody would, reports them. I mean, I don't know how you would, you know, it's just bad luck if you get caught doing it, I guess.
Okay.
Other comment? So, hypothetically, I see someone from the district texting while driving. It's my word against theirs. How is that going to play out?
While you're driving, you're gonna whip out your phone and take a picture of...
Well, no, I wouldn't do that. So, I want to know what, it, it seems, what, do we start an investigation between, I'm just saying...
Well, I think, like, we do with everything else, if we receive a tip, and you call in, and it's your word against theirs, the very...
Because I'm watching all of you.
The very, I think the idea of at least sitting down with that employee, from a professional standards point, to say, we received a tip, or a, a, someone called and reported, that you were texting and driving while on work time, within and of itself, I would hope that we're documenting that that conversation was at least had, even though we may not be able to prove through due process that that was the case, but just a conversation with that employee, at least, that it was brought to our attention. And then, if caught again, or reported again, we've got added documentation that this seems to be. So, while we may not be able to do something formally, a conversation with that employee definitely needs to be had, and that, that hopefully will...
Questions? Okay. Item number 3.22, Policy Number 8710, Insurance, Risk Management, and Claim Settlement. Is the Board okay with accepting the Neola recommendations and the superintendent's recommendations to include? Page 2 of 2, Settlement of Certain Legal Claims. First paragraph changed 10,000 to 20,000. Second paragraph changed 10,000 to 20,000, and select but less than 100,000. Are there any questions or changes? Robert?
Oh. I was just saying, there was just a small one on that last, under settlement of certain legal claims. It says, in this first paragraph, this, the Board authorizes its third-party administrative, not third-part.
Be party, not part. Thinking like...
So, next to the last paragraph, where it talks about, "We authorize shrimp to settle all claims," I think that should be 100,000, because I think we're up to 100, right?
Right. So, if, if it's the Board's pleasure to increase it to 100,000, we would come back and have that script authorization match what you would provide tonight.
Everyone okay with that?
Since we're in the paragraph above it, we're doing 20 to 100 to the superintendent. It makes sense. And then, we're not using the up-to-the-limits-of-sovereign immunity. We're taking that out, correct?
Uh huh.
Thanks.
Okay with those changes? Thank you. Item number 3.23, Policy Number 9160.01, Complaint Procedures Related to Alleged Discrimination Regarding Accessibility of District Facilities. This is a new policy. Is the Board okay with accepting the Neola recommendations and the superintendent's recommendations to include? Page 1 of 2, Compliance Officers, Mark Coco, Safety Manager, 772-219-1200, Extension 30364, 1939 Southeast Federal Highway, Stewart, Florida, 34994, coco.m@martinschools.org. Are there any questions, changes, or comments from the Board? That's it. Okay. Item number 3.24, Policy Number 9211, Parent Organizations, Booster Clubs, and Other Outside Support Organizations. This is a new policy as well. Is the Board okay with accepting the Neola recommendations and the superintendent's recommendations to include? Page 2 of 3, First Paragraph, Approval of the Superintendent. Select Both Options After Third Paragraph. Page 3 of 3, Select Option 2. Last Paragraph, All Fundraising Activities Are Coordinated Through the Principal's Office. Are there any questions, changes, or comments from the Board? Okay. Well, that concludes our policies. Just a reminder that everyone will see these policies a couple more times, so we bring them back to the Board meetings for approval.
Madam Chair.
Yes, sir.
I have just a general question.
Okay.
You know, in the 12 years I'm sitting here, we've gone through policies after policies, and had many policy revisions annually. Is there any professional development on policies, like, giving annual reviews, or something to let staff know of the policy changes and how we do it? Maybe somebody can answer that.
So, these are internal discussions, honestly, that we are having right now, even sitting in this role, new. There are so many policy changes that it even, it concerns me that we're making sure that we're following all of the policies, including the ones that are updated. So, one of the things that you may see me bring forward for a part of the reorganization plan would be a, a policy renewal specialist, or a policy advisory specialist, someone that would have the opportunity to really make sure that we are in compliance, a compliance specialist with all policies, and that may be just an internal position that we already currently have, that we just repurpose to make sure that this is something that we are on, on the very forefront of as we move forward, because...
Isn't that something we can... I almost feel like...
Well, but Neola is not in-house, so Neola is providing the policies, but then, we need someone to be making sure that we're monitoring our internal processes and procedures for compliance of every single policy, and making sure that there's accountability there by staff to make sure... by staff to make sure that that policy is being followed. And when, anytime we're outside of policy, and to Mr. Dieter Lezzi's point, this person would be responsible for making sure that training is being provided on the updated policies, and making sure that we're in alignment with those as, as they come forward.
And that you're getting a signature that prove, to show that they actually did complete it, because when you get audited, just saying you did it doesn't mean anything unless you can prove that all your employees were made aware of it from a compliance standpoint. But, you know, obviously, a lot of that is done in onboarding. When you onboard a new employee, you're signing off that you read the handbook, and you're signing off that you read all these things. But, then, the next, in three months, it changes, and everybody has to re-sign it at that point, or you're out of compliance.
One other piece, just for, for clarification purposes, I'm getting information, just so that we're aware, and it's on the record, that the CDL, anything CDL-related for meds and marijuana, including medical marijuana, is all federally regulated. So, to, I think, Mrs. Roberts' point, and to Mrs. Powers' point, I think, where Neola references federally regulated, Mr. Dieter Lezzi, we will still get clarification from Terry Harmon, but I think we're going to be well within, you know, Neola's recommendations for all of that being federally regulated. So, and not a whole lot of wiggle room, whether it's medical or not.
So, I did want to ask you all, we have a TRIM meeting on July 22 at 4:00 p.m. That'll just take a few minutes to do. We'll already be here. Since we are already here, would everyone be willing to stay and have another policy workshop immediately following the TRIM meeting? That way, we can get these taken care of, because we have quite a few.
That's for new ones, not for these.
And you, another batch.
So, Ms. Powers, you're working on the ones that are, are internal, not non-Neola policies? That list?
What day are you looking at? The 22nd? The 22nd. 22nd, we'll already be here. We had a short meeting prior for TRIM.
We're here on the 29th.
The 22nd. Is the day I'm asking? Willing to stay? Good with that? Great. Thank you. I appreciate it. Okay, well, we have, open to the board. Does anyone have any comments? Roberts? Powers? Do you have anything? Do you have anything? Okay, great. This workshop is now adjourned.